The Dooton's Board of Adjustments will come to order at 7:15 PM. Could you please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Doggett, could you please do a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Cova?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Ms. Riden?
Here.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not sure, is it really bad out there? Well, tonight we have two hearings, there's a preliminary and a public meeting. I'll just kind of give a recap of the preliminary meeting. There'll be no questions from the public on the preliminary meeting. It's more or less for the board to take a review of what we have in front of us, have some questions, fill in some gaps, and hopefully have the public meeting next month. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you want to appoint people to replace Ms. McCarthy?
Oh, yes, correct. And I'd like to appoint Ms. White to replace Ms. McCarthy as a voting member, and Ms. Riden to replace Mr. Gibbs as a voting member. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I am going to recuse myself for the first two items on the agenda for the meeting.
Okay. Is the applicant would like to make a presentation? The applicant's representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones Beach Engineers here for the applicant. We're here tonight for Phase Two of the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park, which includes four buildings totaling approximately 193,000 square feet with road construction from Route 108 and extension of Puzzle Road, or Puzzle Lane. The applicant is requesting 24 variants.
Recording in progress.
Requesting 24 variants for the construction of Phase Two. We request the variants covers two sections of the zoning ordinance. There is section Roman numeral 25.1, which requires a 200-foot structural setback when abutting any other zone, and a section 27.8. B, which restricts building activity requiring a building permit within 50 feet of a wetland. Per section Roman numeral 27.8. B, the buffer impacts are only regulated under this section if a building permit is required. The four wetland buffer impacts proposed are required due to road and drainage feature construction, and therefore we don't believe they fall under this provision but are regulated under section Roman numeral 27.6 and under the purview of the planning board. And for that reason, I believe we're going to, we plan to withdraw the four variants, variances associated with the wetland buffer impacts. Of four of the section Roman numeral 25 variances, there's a total of 20 variance requests. On the plans, we divided them into three categories. The first is the drive impacts, which is the actual access drive. The second is the structural impact, which includes the retaining walls, guardrails, signs. And then the third is the drainage impacts, which are the culvert pipes and manholes. Of the 20 variances requested under section Roman numeral 25.1, 11 of the variances are directly associated with the entrance road. They include the road pavement, retaining walls, guardrails, culverts, and stop signs. Another six of the variances are associated with drainage structures used to treat stormwater from the entrance road. Two are requested for drainage features associated with stormwater treatment for the development. And the last variance request is associated with the proposed sign for the industrial park located on the frontage. We have provided the variance application in letters describing each variance and how it meets the criteria in your package. In the top right of each variance request, you can see the variance, the, our designation for the variance request, drainage impact number three, for example. And then underneath that, it indicates the plan sheet where you can most readily see that. In this case, it would be ZBA number five. Unless the board has specific questions, I would suggest we wait until the public hearing to go through the criteria. Lastly, we have submitted a waiver request for the required fees. As you know, the variance fees is $100 per variance. We submitted for 24 variants, which would be $2,400. The escrow is $250 per variance. And under the additional butters fee, it's $25 per every increment of 25 butters over 25. And we have 168 butters by my count, which would be an additional 300. The applicant paid $2,400 in application fees and a $450 a butter fee, which was a check for $2,850. We also paid the $250 escrow fee for one of the variances. So we're asking the board to weigh the $250 escrow fee for each variance and assuming that we only need one escrow fee. And with that, I'll take any questions the board has.
I have, I have one question about the plans. And I was just going over this with John. If you take a look at ZBA four page, I just happened to pick that out what I was looking at the other day. And, and I'm looking at the wetlands buffer impact, it's on the bottom of it, over in the top right-hand column. It refers to the various, but it doesn't have the number of footage. That's the 50-foot, I think that's 50-foot for wetlands.
So again, we just-
I noticed it's on the other sheet of paper. But for me, if I'm, if I'm looking at this, it's a lot easier to go to this and look at it and find out where it's located. You follow me?
I do follow you, but as I indicated, we're gonna, we're gonna, to withdraw the wetland buffer request because we don't believe this is the appropriate agenda for those. Those are regulated under the site plan, the planning board via the site plan regulations.
Okay, so you're gonna remove all the wetlands?
So all the wetland buffer impact requirements are, will be approved under the site plan review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So for each, and that kind of leads us into on the plans. On each of them, we actually show the variance distance requested, the area of the impact, if it has an area associated with it. And then on the actual planned view, we show the variance distance requested and then the distance from the, the buffer.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the structural impact of the one on that, on page ZBA four, number two, 195 feet, that's the variance request?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's the same as in your variance request application.
All right, okay. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Okay, all right, okay. Pardon me, John?
ZBA three.
Okay, yeah. I just, I just wanted to clarify that because I was looking at the other day and that was my question on the, the wetlands buffer. Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
This is Barbara. I, when the board actually looks at all of these plans and goes through his requests, my suggestion would be instead of taking the requests in order, do one page at a time, do one planned page at a time, and hit everything that's on it that he's asked to request for. Because that way, you're not shuffling back and forth. You can get everything done from one page and then just go to the next page.
Sounds fair to me, yeah. Yeah. Yep. So would we like to start off at page one and see if anybody has any questions? That would be, Todd.
Thank you for sharing.
Todd, I think it's nice.
So page one is just an overview?
Yes, I understand. You know, the, of course, the, this is what, 1 to 1,000 or whatever it is? I don't know what the ratio is on these. But if I'm looking at these buildings here, these have all been adjusted accordingly, so they're all, the setback is over 200 feet, correct?
Correct.
On every one of them? That's why there's no variance, as I think there is no, no requirements for any of those buildings.
Correct. We, we have no variance requests for the buildings.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted the, the public to know that if, we don't have a set of plans for the public to look at, but they haven't changed, but there's nothing you can do anyway. During the, the final, the public meeting, you'll be able to look at them. But all those buildings, they were, I don't know what the setback requirements were at that time, but they've all been moved, all the plans, so they're all over the 200-foot setback.
And, and one of the reasons we're not, we're, we don't have wetland buffer impacts that would be reviewed by the board is because for any of the buildings, we've moved those out of the wetland buffer impacts. So now the only wetland buffer impacts we have are associated with the roadway-
With the road.
-which is covered under the site plan review.
Right, yeah. And so it, yeah, I don't, if we look at the road, there's no issues. We knew that when we looked at the plans anyway. Does anybody have a question on the, on the ZBA one?
No.
I take that as a no? Okay. This gives you, this gives you a nice picture of a John of the road, this area, and how far back they moved to, so nobody down here is being bothered in the residential zone. Yep. Any questions?
I don't think it's not in the 200-foot buffer. Good.
Okay. Please. Yes?
On this, on the ZBA two, I'm not sure how to describe this.
ZBA two, is that what you said?
Yes. If you go up industrial way and that curve to the left, and there's a drainage-
I'm sorry, is your mic on?
I have a red light on.
Okay. It's on, it's not on mute.
Does it say mute here?
Does it say? No, it's, it says, no, it's not on mute.
Okay.
But you're still not hearing me? I'll try to talk louder.
No, go ahead, go ahead and ask the question.
In that, I guess it's a filtration thing?
Infiltration basin?
Yeah, just above that, there's a, there's that line that looks like it's a lot line, but based on what the other lot lines look like, and I'm just wondering if it is or I'm reading this wrong.
I believe that is a proposed condominium line.
That's a proposed condominium line?
Correct.
And could you explain to me what that means?
So we're not doing a typical subdivision. You can do a condominium, so it's a land condominium for each of the buildings.
Okay.
Of course, this, that has to go through approval from the planning board, site plan.
The town engineer has not looked at these plans, has he?
The town engineer has looked at these plans.
Is there a report from the town engineer?
We're in front of the zone, or in front of the site, the planning board for the site plan at, at the moment.
Okay, but there is, so we can look at that at the public meeting? Will that be available?
Um, yeah, I don't remember if we have a comment letter back from the, from the town engineer or not. I mean, we, we have in the past, yes, but of late, I will have to check, but yeah, we can provide you with the comments from the town engineer.
Yes, please. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Are we on three yet?
Um, I, you could look, we asked one, three, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We have the structural impact for the stop sign, the, the road itself, structural impact for the industrial park sign, retaining walls on both sides of the road to make sure that we meet the requirements of the town engineer and the town regarding the slope of the road,
Any questions on three?
And this is going through, this is going through wetland or wetland buffer?
Down here.
Wetland buffer. You can see down on the, on the right-hand side, lower right-hand side.
Continue on to page four.
Excuse me, I just have one quick question.
I'm sorry.
On your sign, your structure, structural impact number five, is that proposed to be in the same place where there's a sign right now? Only because I'm concerned about access for these people who are over here in this other area.
Um, I will look into that. I couldn't, I can't tell you for certain, but we do, if you see that we have the access points for the drive, the paved drive actually touching the, the abutting property on both sides.
Okay.
So we're leaving them in access, and it, we want them to have an access that's defined by the pavement, not to just come on the road wherever they want to. So that's why we have extended that to touch those abutting properties.
Okay, thank you.
Would it continue to number four?
So, number four is an extension of industrial way from 108, and it can, includes the retaining walls and guardrail for structural impacts, as well as the, the drive.
And there's an existing culvert there currently?
There's an existing culvert there. We're gonna maintain that culvert, but we are putting retaining walls in around it to minimize the, the grading impact.
I guess-
I have a question.
Does anybody know why there's an existing culvert there?
Because there's, there's a drainage through there. There's wetlands on both sides and a drainage through there.
Right, but this is a proposed road, right? So we're assuming that this road doesn't exist?
Well, no.
So if there's an existing culvert, I'm just trying to understand why there's an existing culvert in the middle of the road.
There's currently gravel access, so this is all over current gravel driveways to the property. So there's currently a driveway that goes gravel, that goes from 108 to the, basically where we're developing in Phase Two.
So the culvert was put in for the driveway?
Correct.
Okay. And that was put in? So did we-
Long time ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
So we, we saw that?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just clarifying.
We worked at, I think we went through that property on occasion, it was the benefit of our time.
I have a question. Are there any plans to enlarge this at all, this culvert, or are you just gonna keep it the way it is and maintain it?
We're gonna keep it the way it's been, the way it is currently.
All right.
We all set with four?
Yep.
Let's continue on to page five.
So five gets into where we make the first, the big curve into the, the project.
It's easier for me to look at it with you here instead of rolling that daunting out.
Those of you that saw it previously, you can see how we've shifted the road as far away as possible from the abutting properties to the, the south. We still have structural impacts for the guardrail, and we have, you can see now, we're picking up drainage impacts, which we have drainage three, which is basically in the center of the project. It's kind of a green line. Actually came out color on your projects, on your plans. But obviously, we need a culvert for drainage, so we have a culvert that passes under a proposed road and into our proposed infiltration basin. It also includes, on the top left of the sheet, we have two drainage impacts for the outlet structure of the infiltration basin and the pipe that is associated with it. It's basically, or it's, it's a four-foot diameter concrete structure mostly underground. The pipe is all underground except for that, the outlet.
All right, you're taking this off, right, yeah. Any questions on five? Okay, let's continue on.
See, five shows a proposed road continuing east there south to north, and includes a part of the end of the cul-de-sac of commercial, of the industrial drive. We have drainage impacts associated with pipe P-18, which crosses the proposed road, as well as drainage impacts for the infiltration basin number two. Again, we have an outlet structure and a pipe mostly underground. On the right side of the drawing, you can see we have a drainage impact number seven for the pipe, again, coming, crossing the road.
What is my green cloud?
That's a tree line.
That's my tree line?
Yeah.
Existing tree line?
That is the proposed tree line.
Proposed tree line.
And you can see we have, we do maintain a 50-foot vegetated buffer.
Okay.
And that, that's one of the big things that the planning board picked up as well, so we actually, this doesn't show up, but we're adding trees.
Any questions on page six? Let's move on. So move on to seven.
Page seven continues to the north, is at the rear of building number four, which is kind of the L-shaped building. It depicts two impacts, drainage impact number eight and drainage impact nine, which are the outlet structure and the pipe associated with infiltration basin number one. They're kind of on the left center of the project, or the paper.
I do have a comment. I didn't bring my own plans to note, I shouldn't. This other drainage area that's over on the right-hand corner of the plan, and it's also showed, shown on the next page, I believe, I think that there's a, that one doesn't have a number. And if I could just-
So-
So if I could just show you on ZBA eight real quick?
Yep.
Where, where you have that outlet structure and the drainage impact number one.
Talking about that.
Okay, yeah.
This is a, this is a, this little thing here is supposed to be the sewer, and it says drain, drainage impact 10 and drainage impact 11. I think this drainage impact 10 actually goes with this one.
This is outside of the setback. Here's the 200-foot structures.
No, but I'm saying this doesn't have a number.
No, it's not supposed to.
Okay.
We don't need a variance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on seven?
It just says a general question being-
Go ahead.
-to do with this.
Yeah.
What are all these lines underneath, you know, south of the-
Um, contour lines.
Oh, the land contour. Thank you.
Okay.
You probably won't see them on most of the projects, which were, you know, the, the variances, which are typically houses and stuff, but because of the grading and stuff that's involved in this, we have to depict them.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, John?
No, you can keep going. We can keep going.
Keep going, okay. We're gonna look, we're all done with seven, we're gonna move on to eight.
So drainage impact eight continues to the north, shows the, the rear of building number four and building number three, and it depicts the infiltration basin number four, which has drainage impact number 10 and 11, again, for outlet structure, for an infiltration basin and the associated pipe.
Quick, I have just one quick question. What is the dark area with the big bold lines?
That's the proposed location of septic system.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions on eight? Move on to nine.
So really, for nine, 10, and 11, those are more associated with the wetland buffer impacts, which we are going to withdraw. So I'd be happy to talk about them, but we're withdrawing those variances because they're not required.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Do we want to, everybody's happy, no more questions, we would discuss the waiver on some of the fees that they were asked for?
Can you reset the fee waiver for us again?
Yeah, so we have, we submitted 24 variances, which, there's a $100 fee per variance, as, as well as a $250 escrow fee, assuming that you're submitting one variance. Since we're submitting 24, we submitted the, the application fee of $2,400. The escrow, I don't know if we need 250 times 24 for these, for these variances, since we're hearing them all at the same time. We did submit a butter fees to, that are required. If, if there's more escrow needed for the butter fees, obviously, the applicant's gonna pay for that, but we don't think the 250 times 24 for the escrow is appropriate.
Jim? Assuming that there's 168 of butters, that the postage bill is going to be just shy of $1,300.
Okay.
The add is going to be about $100, and anything that needs to be recorded, which would probably be the notice of decision, is going to be an additional approximately 50.
Okay.
So you're looking at needing approximately $1,430.
Now, is that, how about the 24 times, the 250?
Well-
Is that?
Well, we-
Is that 24, including the four that you're gonna withdraw?
Already, yeah. So I just didn't wanna-
So it's 24 total, or is it gonna be 20?
24 total, there'll be 20 that we're coming back for.
Okay.
Sorry.
So really, it's in question of 20, the way I see it?
Yeah.
Not 24, because he's gonna withdraw, withdraw four.
Okay.
Right, but what it is, is the waiver is on the escrow deposit.
Yeah.
The escrow deposit needs to be approximately $1,450. They have deposited 250.
I'd, I'd grant some, I'd be open to granting some leniency on it?
Right, because it's, it's all being held under one public hearing. So there's only one butter notice going out, one public notice going out, one massive notice of decision, you might, I'm going to-
The 250 is per app, per- The 250 is per app, per zoning request?
Well, the 250 would be for one. However, when you scale it up, it's still only $1,300 worth of postage for the abutter notices. It's only 100 approximately for the, to cover the public notice in the newspaper.
You and I talked the other day, Jim, and it was a number like, like $1,220 plus $600. That was my notes that you and I checked.
Well, that was going on the previous one that only had 155 abutter notices. 168 abutter notices is 13 more at $7.85 each.
Okay.
That's not, chump change, that's not losing anything that's running around.
So if we're, if we're looking at either eliminating partially under 250 for the 20 applicants?
That honestly doesn't matter. What you need is, you're gonna need at least $1,500 in escrow to hold your public hearing.
Okay.
And meet your notices of decision.
Are you with us here?
I am. The...
Of which 250 is on deposit.
Okay.
So, well, 450, right?
No, you deposited 250.
Well...
That 450 is the application fee, not, that's just...
If you look on the cover, my cover, so the variance application fee is $100 per application. We had 24 applications, so we wrote a check for, well, that's $2,400. We also wrote, included $450 abutters fee per the fee chart.
Right. That is part of the application fee. If you look right above there, right above on that sheet where it says application fee, it has a separate fee for, if you're doing a subdivision that has more than so many lots.
Oh, yeah, I mean, our...
I'm sorry, that's on the planning board one.
The additional fee is based upon the number of abutters.
Right. That does not cover the abutter notices. That is just the increased work and paperwork that has to be produced for that many abutters. That is not, that is not the escrow. The escrow covers the posted, the cost of the ad, and the record, the recording, and any mileage, what have you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Doggett indicates that the abutter, the notification, and then the recording fee is approximately $1,450.
$1,450, I'd round it to, because I don't know how many pages the notice of decision is gonna go. So if it goes more than two, it's between mileage and recording fee, that's roughly 50 bucks. So I'm suggesting you toss in an extra $50, just to cover if there's, 24 decisions are gonna be a lot of pages.
So we submitted a check for 250.
Right.
Which would leave approximately $1,200. If the board would change our escrow, the remaining escrow required to $1,200, we would be happy with that.
I would...
What do you want to suggest, John?
I'd say just, you know, we'll grant you some leniency, but rather than coming back here and asking you guys to drop off another check if something else incurs and there's more fees than occurs, I'd be up to just another $1,500, which the balance will be returned to you when everything's closed out after the 30 days, and that would just make everybody's life a little bit easier. I'd, I'd motion for that, grant that.
Jim, are you all okay with that, Jim? Okay. Do you want to make a motion? There's, I'm sorry, I forgot the two young ladies at the other end.
No, that's fine. $1,500 sounds fair and sounds like it should cover all the expenses that it needs to.
Yes, okay.
Is white, was that a second?
Oh, yes.
Harlow's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions on the, from the applicant on this preliminary hearing? Let the close the preliminary hearing at 7:50, and also move to the applicant to public hearing on December 7th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harlow's in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, was that second or seventh?
The seventh.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Get rid of some of this stuff here.
Thank you.
Next up is a public meeting for, again, for 125 Development.
Public hearing.
I mean?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Yes, that's what I said. For relief from section XY, X1V1, spec space to allow more than one dwelling unit on a lot, put a land on Puzzle Lane, New Hampshire, properties are references, tax max 14, block one, lots two, and 1-1. The public hearing is a little bit different. The applicant will, the applicant's representative will come up and speak, and then it'll be open to the public for comments. If you could address all your comments to the chair, and if someone on the applicant wants to answer and so forth, there'll be a rebuttal to anybody's question or whatever. And so let's open the meeting and have the applicant come up and speak.
Good evening, board members. As you know from last month, my name is Roy Tilsley from Bernstein Shore in Manchester. On behalf of 125 Development NH Corporation, as you also know from the last hearing, I'm joined by Barry Guyer from Joneson Beach Engineering. I need to start with a procedural matter, because I'm only looking at four people sitting before me. Is there a fifth member voting tonight, possibly in video?
No, there's not. This is, it's just four members.
We're entitled to a full board of five members. As you know by statute, I have to get three affirmative votes in order for our application to carry.
We have a quorum with four.
But I'm entitled, the statute entitles me to five members. Your regulations, your procedures indicate that if a regular member can't sit...
We have, we have one young lady that was out sick.
I understand, you know, but as a matter of law, I'm entitled to a five-person board by statute and by your regulations. And I'm gonna ask the board to continue this until I have a five-person board. It's fully a matter of math for me. It's easy to get three other five than three other four. And my strong guess is that most of these people here tonight are not here to cheer me on. So much as I hate to do it, I have to ask you for a continuance until I can have a full board of five members.
Board members, any comments? I think we're...
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I don't either. Yeah. Well, hopefully, when, if things get better, we have a helping board.
I understand. I get it. I'm not, I'm not here, I'm not angry, I'm not jumped, I just wanna make sure everything goes the way it's supposed to go, so.
So we will move this to, Jim, you had, I'm sorry?
If you offer a continuance, remember that the December meeting is 91-day, is your 91st day.
Okay.
So this continuance takes you beyond the clock.
Okay.
But both parties agree to the continuance?
Right.
I'm happy.
I just warning you that on that night...
It's the 91st day.
It's the 91st day, so it has to either be a joint continuance at that meeting, if it needs to go further, or you must make a decision at the next meeting, period.
Understand.
If we get to that point and you need more time, we'll ascend to a joint continuance, no problem.
Okay.
Great.
So we move to have the meeting on December 7th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harlow's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. We'll see you next month.
Just so the abutters are aware of it, there'll be no abutters notices going out again. Just put it on your calendar for December 7th. And hopefully...
Hopefully, we will too.
Yeah.
Who moved and seconded?
I moved it. Just, yeah, just one question, please. Chief, definitely next month, if you could make sure that someone's here, because I'm, it'll, it'll be this, probably the same group of people or even more. Oh, which, how does that, what is that?
You put 100, double, you have the audacity. Hopefully, you don't miss.
Yeah, well, so if it reaches 100, we need a second person. But you'll take care of one first, and we'll start with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Take some questions from the public. Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name, please, and your address?
Hi, Nancy Kozlosky, 3 Woodland Road, Newton. I just have, I don't understand this, so I want a clarification. The last time this was up, it was voted to send it back to the zoning board to be rezoned. Why are we here now?
No, it wasn't sent back to, we, we had a zoning board, and it was a, to take a look at it and see if you could come up with another idea, which they did.
So this is not exactly the same plan?
No, that's correct.
That was put forward?
That's correct.
Last time?
Yeah, if you, if you, if you look at that, is the plan there? Yeah, yeah. In the way we requested variance and so forth, yeah, yeah.
So am I able to get the updated map online?
It's, it's on the Newton website.
Okay. It's very hard to tell the old one from the new one, that's why I asked.
If you look at it, the newest stuff is at the bottom of the list.
Okay.
And it's actually dated. I put in the date on when I received things.
Okay.
So it's, the plans are, I believe, the last item on this block and lot number.
Okay, because for me, they're only this big, you know?
You can, if you wish, make, make an appointment to come over and see them in person, on either Thursday or Monday.
And I think an important note would be that these plans are still conceptual. They haven't been approved by planning, which would have the final say on a lot of it. So this is just for a proposed variance.
Well, not a proposed. We'd give them the variance.
We'd give them the variance.
Give them the variance.
It's a proposed plan for a variance.
Okay, so at this point in time, well...
Meaning the, the number of buildings could change. It could grow, it could shrink, it could, based on what planning does. The way the plans look aesthetically could change. That's not our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction is to tell them what they are allowed to do based on lot lines and other ordinances.
Okay, so with this...
But the aesthetics of everything is decided by a different board.
Okay. So it, I can't even say at this point in time, but whenever, you won't be granting variances at the next meeting, should everything go well?
Yes, well, if we have, as a request, if we have five members here, we'll have a meeting.
Okay, but we'll, are you granting or denying variances at that meeting?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a request because of the size of the crowd. Would it be possible to, at the December meeting, to schedule this item first?
Yes.
That's a request to the board.
Yes. I, I, it's the only, yeah, that's included. We have two public meetings next month.
You've already scheduled the public hearing for 27-3.
Right.
But I would ask that you schedule this public hearing first. Before the public hearing for 27-3.
It would normally go that way, because they're both public hearings. This one would be the continuance, the other would be the primary.
I have no problem.
So the continued public hearing comes first, sort of old business. The other one is new business starting that night.
So this proposal will be the first item on the agenda in December?
Yeah. Does anybody have an issue with that on the board?
Nope.
Fine. Jim, take care of that, would you please? Any other questions from the audience, or the public?
Hi, my name is Larry Kozlosky, 3 Woodland Road. There was a question about a culvert that nobody seems to know. When it was there, it was just...
Could you speak up, sir? Is that mic on?
Yes.
It is, okay.
The culvert in question was brought up, question was brought up, well, how long has that culvert been there? It's been there for, since the last time. Under the new plans, is that culvert large enough to accept what's gonna be changed, or does that have to be replaced?
Based on what's on the plans and what information we're given, there is an existing gravel driveway, so that culvert, I would assume, was zoned accordingly. Jim?
There has been, there has never been a site planned for that section of 27-3, therefore, a culvert was put in privately. It hasn't, it's on no plan, and it is not, it is, I don't know who may have approved it, the building department, the road agent, but it, because there was never a plan for that area, a site plan, there's, it was just put in by the property owner.
Just my question, changes in, in the property, was that, will, will that culvert that's there now be suitable, or will it have to be replaced?
Good question.
I believe that's something that the town engineer can answer that question.
Okay, thank you very much.
He would take a look and see whether the size of it would work for the roadway that's gonna go over it.
Okay, thank you.
And did we request the engineer report for this?
Yeah, we requested a engineer for this. No, not on this one here, that was the last one. But there's, there's already an engineer report on this one here, isn't there, Jim?
Not on this set of plans, on the previous set of plans. The, remind the, the ZBA, you have the ability to hire any experts that you wish. If you wish to have the town engineer review the set of plans for the ZBA, that's, you're well within your, your power.
I would, I would think that would be appropriate.
Well, I guess I would, I'm not debating on whether that would be appropriate or not. I guess my biggest question would be, was the culvert on the previous set of plans? I could assume that it was.
It was, yeah.
We, we have the engineer report on the previous set of plans.
Okay.
This has just been under continuance.
What do you think? It's already there? The culvert was there with the, when the, but he might have not looked at it in that respect.
Though I will warn you, if you do choose to go that route, you're going to have to probably double what you just asked to have put into the escrow account.
If the culvert was there on the last one, the first engineer looked at it, town engineer, whether he would have looked at it in the same way we are, I'm not sure. With that gentleman's question.
I think we need the engineer report to determine whether he even addressed it.
Yeah.
Because it would be listed.
Can we get a copy of the engineer report, Jim? Let's, let's do that, and if there's an issue, we can go forward.
Yeah, and if there's an issue, we'll have it re-engineered and go from there.
Sir, just a quick question from Mr. Doggett. Did you say your office hours are Monday and Thursday?
Yes.
And what would the times be, please?
On Monday, it's 10 to 4.
10 to 4?
And on Thursday, it's 10 to 4.
10 to 4, thank you. And we can come down and review the plans at that time?
Yes, please call and let me know when you're coming, so that I, because if I have to go to the post office or what have you, you know, there's nobody else to cover. to go to the post office or what have you, you know, there's nobody else to cover.
Okay, 10 to 4 Monday and Thursday, thank you.
Right.
Are there any other questions from the public? Yes, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
My name is Ray Rogalski, 14 Balsam Way. I'm hoping that we all learned a valuable lesson today about rules and regulation by Mr. Tinsley's comments. We go by the rule of law, and that's why the rules are there. We have rules, zoning laws, regulations, not to be taken lightly and messed with. Okay? That's one great lesson I learned here tonight. Let's start playing by the rules. Okay? If we're going to make an exception, give it some real serious thought. We're here to go by the rules, by the law, correct? Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, we're going on to our own business next, ladies and gentlemen, so if you'd like to leave.
Do we close the public meeting?
We got, we have, oh, yeah.
Thank you all for coming. We'll see you next time.
Listen, you've come a long ways already, baby. Chief, thank you very much.
Went to that thing, the, the, yeah. Some other things, the, 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 I don't, I thought it was somewhere, but God knows, I can't, can't chapter and verse it.
Right.
No, they do have a right, they do have a right.
No.
It's, it's because it's harder to get three votes from four people. Right, and so, because of the number.
Oh, my God.
If you had, if you had a seven-member board-
Ah, yeah, that's my business, the number.
Not a full board, it would be a different story. Yeah. I think it's sort, sort of up for interpretation.
Right, yeah.
Extension 315.
Yes, right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they, they do have a right.
If you call around 10, I can say, yeah, I've got to be out for the next hour, and then you can-
Hey, how are you? Good, doing okay?
Yeah. Not a problem, not a problem. You're welcome.
Hi, nice to meet you. You look familiar.
I've been talking about the, the, it's coming down behind my house.
Yes, I do remember that.
Do you? I sent you a picture of the picture.
Yes, yes, and I answered you back. That's, that's when I was working for the building department, I believe, yes, yes. It's good to see you in person. Okay.
Excuse me? We, we-
Thank you.
Are we, we now have to pay him? Oh, yeah, no, but it just means I have to get, have them add it to the escrow account.
Well, we're already requesting next weekend, it's, it's going to be a-
I don't think we expected quite so many people.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, John. Have a great time. Good to see you again. He's in the hospital, he's going home tomorrow.
Can I ask?
Thanks.
Board members, to save the paperwork I sent in your packet, you got a little checklist thing for the criteria and what have you?
Yes.
Save that so I don't have to print it all out again.
Okay.
Sir?
Okay.
That's yours.
Acceptance of minutes of October 5th.
First of all, I want to officially put on the record that I am back on the board.
We discussed the, the minutes of October 5th. Anybody have any issues or comments?
Nope. Make a motion to accept the minutes of September 7th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Jim, okay. Next, the review of the escrow account.
Make a motion to pay the escrow account of $1,252.65.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, okay. Okay. We're going to go into, you, help me with this, Roger, because we've only gone into non-public once or twice, we're going to go into non-public.
So first of all, I think we need to make an announcement that we're going, we'll go into non-public. When we come out of non-public, the only things that we will do is perhaps seal the minutes, there will be no other business-
Yeah. And then we'll adjourn.
After we come out of non-public, other than to seal the minutes and adjourn.
Yeah.
And at this point now, I'll make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A for promotion of compensation to a public employee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Pardon me?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Ms. Rieden?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
The, the first thing, uh-
No, well, now, we've got to basically get off television.
Yeah, we have to have the-